Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, September 9, 2025, regular business meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with almost all council members present. Councilmember Gilman should be joining us in a moment. So before we move on to adoption of the agenda, I'd like to invite forward Chief Matt Morris of the Olympia Fire Department for an announcement. Hi, Chief.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to kind of just spend a couple of minutes with you. I promise I won't take long. But it's a story I want to share with you because I think it's important for you and the community to hear about some of the great things that the fire department is doing in the community. You know, we talk about in the fire department, we talk a lot about the things that we believe in, and we talk about our culture, and we talk about serving and just taking care of people. And the story of the call that I want to share with you tonight is an amazing story. And so if you indulge me for a minute, I'll dig into that. So what I want to do is I want to recognize some crews that participated in the structured fire response that occurred earlier in August. It was a atypical response, meaning it came in as a residential fire alarm, so it was a single-engine response. So not a full response, just a single engine. When they arrived, they discovered they did, they actually did have a house on fire, and so now they're shorthanded. And in addition to that, they had family members on scene that would tell them that there was a family member trapped inside. So there's a moment in that that a first-arriving officer, the supervisor on that engine, has to make a decision of what do they do? Do they go into that environment, into that burning building to try to effect a rescue or not? And they have to weigh all of the risks in that. And recognize that now they're on scene, he's requested all those additional resources, but those next arriving resources are going to be seven, eight minutes away, and so they're operating on scene by themselves with no safety net, which means no backup team, right, no additional resources. And so him and his firefighter make an entry into this burning building, into a smoky environment with a hose line, and begin to search for this missing person. They make it down the hall, no visibility, struggling to see. They make it to the doorway, they find the fire behind the doorway. They put the fire out. Now they have zero visibility and moderate heat, and they continue to search for the victim. They find the victim in the bathroom behind a closed door. The victim's unconscious, unresponsive. This is a moment. Do they make a rescue and attempt to remove the victim from the fire, knowing they have no additional resources? If they have an air pack problem, if there's a structural collapse, if there's a fire event like a flashover or an extension of the fire, a structural collapse, a roof collapse, there's nobody that's going to come save them for seven minutes. They decide to go ahead and make the rescue. So they begin to remove her from the house. That's not an easy task when a person's unconscious, unresponsive, and they have to get them out of the bedroom, down the hall, and that. In the process of that, the officer in charge, his low air alarm begins to go off, which means he's got less than 25% of his available air in his bottle. Now, standard practice would tell you to leave the building immediately at that point. The decision's made to not do that because they know if they do that and they leave her inside to go out and get a bottle change, she will not survive. She has no chance to survive. So they continue to try to remove her from the building, even though their low air alarms are going off. It's a calculated risk. We have a phrase, "Risk a lot to save a lot." So you have firefighters that are inside a burning building with no backup, operating on what's very little air, attempting to save somebody they've never met. They get within 10 feet of the door, and at that point, the officer's almost out of air, and the truck company has arrived, and they get relieved. And they're able to hand the patient off or the victim off to the truck to continue the rescue, and they get out of the building just in time before they run out of air. Had they run out of air in that environment, they themselves would have become fire victims. The story gets better. The truck is able, the truck comes able to remove the victim from the fire. They hand the patient off to initial BLS care, the aid unit, who initiates life-saving care, and then hands that off to the paramedics, and then as a team, they work on this patient, and they successively resuscitate her to where she's going to recover and go on with her life. So the story I wanted to share was just a story of courage, right? And they, and they say that courage is doing something when you know the risk, right? And you understand and know that, that there's a decision you make to place yourself at excessive risk, right? Even though it's probably scary, you do it anyway. And I'll share with you, that's the culture of the Olympia Fire Department. They go further, they do more, they work harder than they should or should have to, but they do because they care about people. So I'm going to call a few people out. And if they could, just kind of step forward and raise your hand as I call you out. Battalion Chief Russell Herman was the innocent commander on the call. Lieutenant Aaron Russ. Aaron Russ was the first arriving lieutenant that made these calculated risk decisions. Lieutenant John Winkelman, there he is. Firefighter Austin Jones, the other firefighter on the rescue. Firefighter Michael Knapp. Firefighter Aaron Johnson. Firefighter Ryan Davis. Paramedic firefighter Wade Glenn. Paramedic firefighter who's not here tonight, he's not able to be here, Roy Rubio. And then firefighter Hunter Duro. And firefighter Ben Harder. This is, and I'll wrap up the story with all of you, and just to say that, that it's a privilege and an honor to get to serve our community as firefighters and as fire department. And we take it serious. We work hard, we train hard, and we prepare hard. This is a once-in-a-career type of an event, type of a call. And this is the moment that, that you prepare for and train for because you have to be perfect. And the thing that you do the least of on a fire department, you have to be the best at. And I think what these crews showed is they're absolutely the best you could possibly have serving in your community. So I appreciate, I'm more than happy to take any questions, but thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Chief. And thank you all so very much for your response and for your service in the department. You represent what's the finest about Olympia. Are there any comments from the dais? Mayor Protem, win.
Oh, it's silly. I just, it's also so much gratitude, and I've never experienced a standing ovation like that before. It's usually like a couple of people stand, and then people look around like, oh, am I supposed to be standing? Is this important enough to be standing? But it's like, these people can jump up faster. And yet the whole crowd, and I'm so glad that you brought this to us tonight to be, to be honored and held up, Chief. This is truly incredible work. It's really great to see everyone tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Green, followed by councilmember Cooper.
Yeah, thank you, Chief Morris, for sharing that story. And, and thank you to all of you, not just for this event, but for what you do every day. We, you know, sometimes see reports come through on significant incidents, and we just don't always get to hear that kind of nuance. And it's incredible work that, that you all do every day, and, and such incredible, incredibly challenging decisions that you're faced with. And so I think, you know, courage is exactly the right word, and I'm just incredibly grateful that, for everyone who, who serves this community in that way and is willing to take those kinds of risks, because not everyone can do that. So, thank you.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Thank you, Chief. What a beautiful story. I think that you walked through all of the fire ops stations except for extrication in one call. And I think it's just that kind of a story that talks about why it's so important to make sure we're well-staffed and we have the right equipment. And all of that doesn't matter because we have the right people in those jobs. And I'm just so proud of all of you for taking care of us every single day, every single night, and especially thankful to your families for the sacrifice that they make because you're not there a lot. And it's because you're being heroes to the community, and we owe you a lot for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments? Councilmember Vanderpool.
Thank you for coming out. I appreciate each and every one of you, every, every single day. There's always a chance of something happening in our community, but your preparedness and your ability to serve the community makes sure that isn't, is the, is the, it's the stuff that makes our community safe every single day. Us as council members, us as a, as a community, really need, we, I'm, how do I say this? I would can, I believe that in order to really support you, we have to continue to do what we can for you, to, to fund the strategic plan, to do the things that, that make your jobs easier. Because honestly, most people wouldn't be able to do what, what is just in that story, or what happened the other day over in Parsville. The amount of work that you guys put forward every day, I mean, I, I'm kind of word saddling, saddling it right now, but it's, it's critical. And I, I tell everyone that, you know, they're one of the most critical services. And I mean, it's, it's, I, I always tell people that if, that it wouldn't be a job that I could take or do, or a lot of other people could because of just the amount of dedication involved. And I really do appreciate it. I really do.
Thank you. Additional comments? Seeing none. You know, I, as I said, best of the best. Chief, when you were sharing that story about pulling her out of the building and how difficult that is, I have flashbacks to when Mayor Protem and I were in fire ops. And I don't mean to bring up that experience every time you're in front of me, but it was such a profound one that it just made me think about how difficult that was to do with a dummy. And I can't imagine what it's like to do that when you know an actual human life is on the line, actually, and not even just that person's, but maybe even your own. And you're willing to do that to save someone. So incredibly difficult. I felt it myself in the training. I'm sure that's times three. But just know that this council, this city as an organization and a community thanks you for your dedication and service and courage for serving in the Olympia Fire Department. And I hope our community can see this and sleep a little more soundly, knowing that we have people like you that are willing to put everything on the line to save them. So, thank you so much. And please come forward so we could take a picture with all of you. Okay, what a great way to start a meeting. We'll just give everybody a moment to go ahead and clear out. You know what? Why don't we go ahead and take a five-minute recess, just so we can reset the chambers and celebrate the moment? Recession. Okay, so we are back, and we are going to continue. Just very quickly, I want to mention that we are having difficulty with Zoom this evening, unfortunately. So we do not have the ability right now to stream our meeting live through Zoom tonight. And unfortunately, the public cannot participate through Zoom. But you are able to continue watching the meeting on OLE TV3. And also, just a reminder, that after tonight, our next business meeting is on Tuesday, September 30. So there won't be an opportunity for public comment until then after tonight. So with that, I need a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Second.
All those in favor of the agenda as published signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. So our first item tonight is 2A on our agenda, Special Recognition Proclamation Recognizing National Voter Registration Day. And we have a proclamation to be read by councilmember Green.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Whereas registering to vote empowers eligible citizens to exercise their right to vote on Election Day, and whereas Thurston County is committed to strengthening democracy by encouraging voter registration and increasing participation in all elections, and whereas civic-minded people and organizations have collaborated to establish September 16, 2025, as National Voter Registration Day, and whereas the goal for the 2025 National Voter Registration Day is to create awareness of elections and motivate eligible citizens to vote in coming months, and whereas the strength of our democracy depends on the willingness of our citizens to participate by choosing the people who will lead us and by voicing their opinions on important matters that will come before the voters on Election Day. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Olympia City Council does hereby recognize September 16, 2025, as National Voter Registration Day in the city of Olympia, Washington, and encourages all eligible county residents to register to vote. Signed in the city of Olympia, Washington, this ninth day of September 2025, Dante Payne, Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Green. And now I'd like to invite up Jack Manjin, who is the Thurston County election technician, for a few comments and to receive the proclamation tonight. Hi, Jack.
It's nice to be back. Thank you for recognizing National Voter Registration Day. Voting is the cornerstone of our democracy, but you can't vote if you're not registered. Last year, we passed 200,000 registered voters in Thurston County, and we had 38,591 registered voters in Olympia, which is Thurston County City with the most registered voters. Yeah, yeah. In last year's November general election, 31,786 Olympians voted, a voter turnout of 82.4%, which is very high. Now, to be a registered voter, one must be a United States citizen, a Washington State resident, and be 18 years old by Election Day. Voter registration has never been easier. Through same-day voter registration, you can register and vote up until 8:00 PM on Election Day. And 16- and 17-year-olds can pre-register to vote, and we will send them a ballot as soon as they are eligible. 2025 is the 12th National Voter Registration Day in Thurston County, and we appreciate your help in increasing awareness for registering and participating in the democratic process. Voters can register in person at a voting center through a registration drive. They can mail us a voter registration form, or they can register online. Simply go to votewa.gov and follow the prompts. You will need a driver's license, or state ID, or the last four of your social security number. Our voter services office in Tumwater is next to our ballot processing center in the Mottman neighborhood. We will also have a fully operational voting center at the Lacy Timberland Library during the general election. This is where voters can register to vote and get a replacement ballot during an election. We will also be partnering with the Olympia Timberland Library for this election, and the voters can go there to register to vote and be issued a ballot for this upcoming November general election. Thank you again for your support and partnership on this and so many important issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. I'm going to present you with the proclamation in a moment, but first I want to see if there are any comments from the council. Councilmember Madron.
Thanks for being here, Jack. Thanks for helping us through some of our own processes when we're voting on some things like new council members. I just really picked up on your, how easy it is to register to vote. I have a new voter in my household. My daughter turned 18 this year, and she got a ballot in the mail and said, "Did you register me to vote?" And I had to explain to her that when she got her driver's license, she registered herself, and that when the time came, the ballot came. And she was so excited to fill that out and vote. So, a little story there. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Additional comments? Mayor Protem, win.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. This is a really important one. It's always important, and it feels particularly important this year. I think there are, well, I know there to be folks that are trying to take mail-in voting away. You know, it feels weird to, to not say that. I feel like there's this big, like, elephant in the room, at least for me. I didn't always know how, how great we sort of have it in Washington State with the opportunity to vote in person. We can vote by mail. We can also vote with our, all the many ballot drop boxes that are around, and, and what a privilege that is. And if it wasn't important, I don't think people would be trying to take it away. So anyways, I just wanted to say that out loud, and thank you so much for being here. And, and I hope we, as impressive as that number is, and I hope we continue getting registrations up, it's 80%, which I don't want to take away from that, right? It's a little over 80%, which is huge for voter turnout. And compared to, if we looked at the people that probably are actually eligible to vote but aren't registered to vote, you know, that it could be more impressive. So what a privilege it is, and I hope we exercise it more. And for folks that are listening in person or on OLE TV, and they're like, yeah, I know all of this, well, go tell someone that doesn't know, and go help them register to vote. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? Well said. I've even prepared some comments for myself tonight that are along, along those lines. But the, the whole reason for, you know, folks trying to take away our ability to have mail-in voting is really just to voting is really just to sow doubt in the integrity of our elections. And, you know, restricting mail-in voting is a way to, or at least calling for us to do so, is to continue to fan the flames of that doubt amongst our community members. Folks should know that our election laws are determined by the state and the Congress. They are not determined by executive order by the President of the United States. Security experts have repeatedly confirmed that mail-in voting is reliable. You know, our state's laws preserve what we have, which is access to universal mailing, same-day registration, as we just heard, auto, automatic registration, as we just heard, and also preregistration for 16- and 17-year-olds. And also the restoration of rights for some citizens who have been convicted of a felony. And those are all incredible feats that I think for us is important, that we recognize that that's in the best interest of having as many people as possible participate in our elections, so that we have a more representative government. And that's something that we should all want. So, thank you very much, Jack, for being here tonight, and I'm going to present you with the proclamation.
Thank you. If you want a picture, I'm always down for a picture. Yeah? Yeah?
Okay. So we're going to move on to item 2B, which is also a Special Recognition Proclamation Recognizing Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month. And we have a shared reading of the proclamation, beginning with Councilmember Madron.
Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month was originally established in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week to recognize the rich contributions, inspiring histories, and vibrant cultures of Hispanic and Latinx communities. And whereas in 1988, the observance expanded to a month-long celebration from September 15th through October 15th, coinciding with Independence Day celebrations of various Latin American nations. And...
Whereas the histories of many Hispanic and Latinx people are intricately linked to indigenous cultures of the Americas, as well as diverse ancestries, including African, Spanish, Caribbean roots. And whereas the Hispanic and Latinx population has grown significantly, constituting the largest racial and ethnic minority in the United States and steadily increasing in Thurston County. And...
Whereas Hispanic and Latinx communities significantly contribute to Olympia's diverse tapestry and have profoundly shaped American society through achievements in arts, government, agriculture, education, civil rights, science, technology, and innovation. And...
Whereas despite these invaluable contributions, Hispanic and Latinx communities nationwide and within Olympia continue to face harmful legislative efforts, discrimination, and systemic injustice targeting their identities, livelihoods, and rights. And whereas Olympia proudly stands as a sanctuary city committed to protecting the safety, dignity, and human rights of all individuals regardless of immigration status. And...
Whereas the city of Olympia reaffirms its dedication to policies and practices that protect accessibility to city services and foster inclusivity, equity, and belonging, recognizing that the safety and well-being of Hispanic and Latinx communities are vital to our city's strengths. And...
Whereas the city of Olympia is honored to partner in community celebrations, including Lula Fest, which boldly affirms Hispanic and Latinx heritage, representation, and visibility to a critical time of civil uprising, combating efforts to minimize and erase Latinx voices, fostering unity, collective strength, resilience, and community healing. And...
Now therefore be it resolved that the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2025, as Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month in Olympia, reaffirming our commitment to stand with and support Hispanic and Latinx community members. We encourage all Olympians to join in celebrating the contributions, resilience, and cultural heritage of Hispanic and Latinx communities to our city, state, and nation. Signed in the city of Olympia, Washington, this ninth day of September 2025, Olympia Any comments from the council? Oh, I'm skipping that. One second. We're going to invite up our guests. It's not about us. All right. So at this time, I'm going to invite up Miguel Panetta, who is the CEO of Lula Fest, for a few comments, and he'll be followed by Jose Romo Ramirez, who is a representative from the Washington State Latino Leadership Network. Good evening.
Mayor, council, geez, this is exciting to be doing this for year number three. Obviously, we have a more dynamic plan, but I think some of the inspiration to remember why we're doing this is there's a saying, "Aquí estamos y no nos vamos." We're here, and we're not going anywhere. You can't take our history, you can't take our culture, and you can't take away our community. That's why we do this. Visibility is important. And one of the most important themes amongst all this divisive behavior that we don't have any control over right now is unity. And we want to leverage unity in our community to make it safer. You know, comunidad is about everybody, and making everybody feel welcome, and everybody has a plate, and everybody has a place to be here. So we're thankful for the opportunity, because, you know, much like the chief was saying, you know, courage, right? We could walk away from this and let whatever forces be make us feel fear, but that's not how we've ever survived. We've already been through this in history, and we won. So if, whether this is a light or darkness kind of thing, Darth Vader's going to lose, okay? History already told us this. So with that being said, I'm very thankful for the partnership that we've formed with the Latino Leadership Network. And Audrey, who couldn't be here, our wonderful Audrey, who owns Revmo and, as well as the Capitol Theater, we're very thankful for them helping us establish a safe space and putting their experience to work. So we're very thankful. We have representatives from LLN, and I always travel with my family, so I'm very thankful for everything that they've done to allow us this space. And with that notion, I'd love to pass it over to Jose. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. On behalf of the Latino Leadership Network, I'd just like to thank you for the honor to be part of the city festival celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. In Spanish, we have a saying that says, "La cultura cura," "Culture cures." And I would like to honor Cesar Chavez, and thank you in his words, "Thank you for helping students and parents cherish and preserve the ethnic and cultural diversity that nourishes and strengthens this community and this nation." So for us, it was a no-brainer when we heard this event and we saw the opportunity to be out in the open and represent more than any. It aligns with our vision of the Latino Leadership Network, which we strive to invest, inspire, and serve Latino workforce and leaders of today and tomorrow. So with that, we are very honored and thank you for giving us the opportunity to celebrate with the community. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Before I turn it over to council for comments, Miguel, did you want to provide details on Lula Fest?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's going to be September 27th, and it's taking place in the same footprint as Summerfest. So it'll be from Franklin to Capitol and Legion to Fourth. We thought that would, you know, we could stretch out, and we have an excellent car show going on with Beer Garden. We have two stages this year. We have family activities from the South Sound Y. We have all of our partners vendors. We have a lot of state agencies coming and showing up and helping folks elevate their game and their career. So, yeah, we'll be from one to eight in front of OFS. You'll hear it.
Thank you. Comments from council? Mayor Protem Nguyen.
CEO of Lula Fest, huh? That tracks so hard for you. That makes so much sense.
I didn't put that title down.
I know, it's going to be a good time. Yes, and the people that are smiling or laughing is because they know this person, okay? Yes, and it is a good time, for sure. I am so thankful for everyone that came for this proclamation, all of the supporters, and as well as our guest speakers tonight. This is an event that I'm really looking forward to as well. I'm reminded of the city changing how we partner with community for this event, and, you know, get into the details, but trying to give community more authority over, like, what happens, decision-making, right? And being creative, and us being really just a partner to help boost it. And so I'm looking forward to, I won't ask you at the fest, but I'm looking forward to seeing how that new model shakes out for folks, and hopefully it's helpful in figuring out something that's going to be sustainable, right? Because it's about to be the third, but, you know, we want it to just keep going and keep going. So really exciting stuff. And a special thank you to Olivia for all of your work. I mean, you had to convince us to do that model, so, and you said it was going to be okay, so I trust you. But thank you, everyone, so much for being here tonight and giving us, community members, folks that identify with Hispanic and Latinx, and folks that don't, and a place to just come together and have a good time, maybe learn something new, taste something new, and build a memory together in Olympia. So, thanks.
Yeah, I don't want to underplay the actual significance that Olivia Salas de Bro has brought to this program every single year. She's been an excellent steward of the city's time and resources by educating us, and so I really, separately, I mean, I call her like my sister, but she really has been an integral part of this process.
Thank you. Thank you, Olivia. Councilmember Gilman.
Quiero respeto y dignidad para todos. For everybody, respect and dignity. And it comes from recognizing that there's more than one language, more than one way to speak your heart in our community. And it comes from recognizing that the many cultures in our community are a big part of our strength and also our joy. And I'm, so I am so glad that we continue to support and recognize cultural celebrations from different groups, and this one is a special one in my heart, and one that I feel especially strongly that at this moment in our national politics, that we have to stay united as one community here in Thurston County. So bless you, glad you're here.
Thank you. Any additional comments? I have a few, but I'm going to ask the council members to read what flags are represented up here in front of us. So, beginning with Councilmember Cooper.
Okay, I have Argentina and Nicaragua. And you'll correct us if we say them wrong, right? No, I don't know.
I'm not from those places.
Okay.
So these are Bolivia and Paraguay.
Dominican Republic and Haiti.
Mexico and Ecuador.
Chile and Guatemala.
Honduras and Cuba.
Colombia and Costa Rica.
Just quickly, in relation to this, Anna Schlecht has come out every year since we started and puts out these huge flags from all, tons of Latin American countries, and it really has been awesome. Another person I'd like to recognize who's brought this type of visibility and the art community together.
Thank you. Thank you, Anna, of course. She's behind something else. She's busy. You know, diversity is our strength, as the proclamation talks about, and I'm just so glad to celebrate you, and I'm glad that you're here. And I just feel like I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the time that we were in. I think that it's so important right now that we have celebrations like this. This is our third annual event for the city of Olympia, and especially now, it's so important that we still celebrate when we're in really dark times. We're talking about the mass deportation of so many communities, raids, you know, just the inhumane conditions of detention centers. These are the times we're living in, and Miguel, you had said something about that we don't have any control over what's happening, and it's not that I disagree with you, but I will say that we do have control over what's happening, but we're not exercising it. We have federal leaders that are complicit in what's happening. And unfortunately, we don't have necessarily control over changing each person's mind. But I would just say that we're better than this. And it's, this is something that has been heavy on my heart since January, since the start of the new administration. I'm so proud of us for being able to hold the line with our sanctuary city status and protect the people in this community who we love and care about, who represent so many different backgrounds, those you see up here, those you see in chambers, and those who are not here. So thank you for being fine representatives of Olympia, of your individual communities showing up as yourselves. And we celebrate you and your inherent worth and dignity as human beings. So happy Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month, and I'm going to present you with the proclamation, and we could take a photo. So what a wonderful way to start a meeting. So we're going to move on to public comment. We do have one person signed up here in the chambers, and I do believe you have spoken in recent days. So we're going to go ahead and cut to the chase and invite you up, Mr. Burgess, for your comments. You have two minutes. up, Mr. Burgess, for your comments. You have two minutes.
There we go. Yeah, racial diversity. This country was founded by various cultures, Polynesians at Southeast, Vikings, the indigenous people that were already here, and the Latinos that were already here. So it's great to have a blending of cultures for everybody. Everybody contributes, and especially Latino culture contributes greatly, you know, to the economy. And so anyway, what was I here to complain about? Yeah, I have air quality issues where I'm at at P201 Fern Street, Fernridge Place Apartments. Seems like a lot of it's not normal or natural. Somebody's pumping in horrible, horrible stuff into my apartment. I had, well, like diesel fuel for about 17 months. I've been here. I talked about that. They changed it up with different chemicals. It's not normal. It's not natural. I have a Facebook page, Richard Burgess, Chantilly Secondary School Alumni, Chantilly Secondary School Alumni, Richard Burgess. And my phone number is 1-360-485-3632. My email I'm trying to get going is SaxonJade333@gmail.com. Yeah, I've got air quality issues that need to go away. Kind of a paranoid schizophrenic. Seems like people have been out to get me. Hopefully that stops. And there goes my mind, super, super blank. But hopefully air quality issues clean up. And maybe with fire prevention, maybe Channel 3, they could do a home fire thing so people would learn how to, with their $10 fire extinguisher, to learn how to do stuff to take care of, prevent fires in their place and so forth. And we commend the firefighters for sure. I did save a family from burning up in a fire. So thank you very much, and I know you wish me luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. And we're going to go ahead and ask staff to just follow up and look into the situation. If there is anything that we can do in response, please do so. Thank you. So that concludes public comment for tonight. So we're going to move on to adoption of the consent calendar. But before we do, is there any requests for polls for questions or comments? Mayor Protem, when?
This is the poll about the youth council. I think you're already tracking that one.
Okay, so any additional requests for polls? Yes, Councilmember Gilman.
4F, the CARES post-hospitalization support for comment.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm tracking 4E and 4F will be pulled for comment. So we'll begin with 4E, which is the approval of a recommendation to appoint members to fill vacancies on the Olympia Youth Council. And we have Susan Grisham, who is the assistant to the city manager for comment.
Good evening, council members. Everyone's way taller than me, so I'm just going to lower this a bit. Good evening, council members. For the record, my name is Susan Grisham, and I am liaison to the Olympia Youth Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight a little bit about the work of the youth council and this evening's appointments before you for consideration. We are nine months into the youth council's first year, and I'm excited to share some of accomplishments our youth council have achieved so far. Since January, the youth council has reviewed and provided comment on several chapters of the 2045 Comprehensive Plan, including public participation and partners, transportation, land use and urban design, along with the climate and housing elements. They've developed a social media plan to help us guide how the youth council would like to use social media. They met with the Lacey Youth Council to strengthen regional collaboration. They planned and hosted an event to engage with new, a recruitment event to engage with youth leaders, and created and released a public service announcement focused on overdose awareness and prevention. It's pretty good for nine months, I think. So along the way, six of our founding members have graduated, and they moved on to college. So I just want to take a moment while we're here to recognize them and thank them for their service, and that is Willow Chen, Allison Walker, Melinda Lee, Stella Artemis, Gavin Cruz, and Victoria Liu. Each of these members received a letter of recognition and a certificate from Mayor Payne thanking them for their service. So tonight, excuse me, tonight, I'm here to present the appointment of 11 new members who will serve on the Olympia Youth Council from September 2025 through September 2026. Interviews were conducted on August 7th and 8th by a panel that included our Mayor Protem, Youth Council Chair Nolan O'Connell, and Youth Council Member Shruthi Lingam Natmai. All applicants interviewed are being recommended for appointment. These young people range in age from 15 to 18 and attend Olympia High School, Capitol High School, homeschool programs, Running Start, and are students at SPSCC. Their talents are broad and impressive. Among them are musicians, artists, athletes, debaters, camp counselors, and student government leaders, among other things. They are passionate about mental health, public safety, education, the environment, housing equity, and youth involvement in civic life. And importantly, they're ready to work to lift the voices of the young people in our community. The 11 youth recommended for appointment are Addie Pittman, Elena Wedstein, Amelia Esslinger, Amelia Lehman, Anika Parabakar, Donovan Hohola, Elizabeth Mendoza, Gian Palma, Greshen Hillier, Pamela Palmerson, and Zian Zhao. They will join the nine continuing youth council members, Demore Joseph, Eric Zhang, Kalen Velasquez, Nolan O'Connell, Shruthi Lingam Natmai, Sophia Park, Toby Wilson, Farshaan Horback, and Iman Haroon. With these appointments, we will have a full youth council of 20 members. Onboarding for new members will take place next Wednesday, September 17. And at that meeting, the youth council will also begin planning their 2026 work plan. Some of the early ideas being discussed are a follow-up public service announcement, a joint event with the Lacey Youth Council, youth engagement around our sister-city relationship, and expanding connections with city programs and departments. These young people are engaged, capable, and committed. I'm incredibly proud of what they've accomplished and even more excited about what lies ahead. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Susan. Are there any comments from council? Mayor Protem, when?
Wow, is that all, Susan? That, just that? Yeah, lovely comments. What a beautiful job you did of just really, in a short statement, sharing the whole breadth of what the youth council has been up to. And it's really clear how proud you are of them. And even tonight, but then also just through talking to you, when, you know, because we get curious about this work, I certainly do, and you just light up when you talk about the youth council. And I think they also make you laugh when maybe you need to laugh. This, I get excited every time this topic comes up. And just wanted to share with folks, this is a good opportunity here at council to share that, you know, what happened during, what discussion happened during those interviews, right? When the panel got a second alone, is the panel wanted to know, huh, how could we get more touch, a touch point with council? Can we, can we have a council-to-council meeting with them sometime? You know, they're open to getting creative, but they would like, yeah, they would like more of a, more FaceTime with council. And I think we can figure out how to do that. And so, and I think that's something you're chewing on, right, Susan?
It definitely is. And I think Mayor Protem and I, you will have a little more conversation about what that could look like, so we could present a plan to council.
Yeah, I really love that. And I feel really lucky that we even have 20 young people that went through the process in order to volunteer for something for the community. I think that's really, really says a lot about us at Olympia. So thanks so much for all that you do.
It's an honor and a privilege to work with the youth council. On days where, you know, I think we were just talking about some, you know, unsureness about what's going on in our country right now, I look to these young people. They inspire me so deeply, and it's just an absolute honor that I get to work with them.
Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we are going to go ahead and pull for comment by Councilmember Gilman. 4F, which is the approval of a resolution authorizing an agreement with Lewis Mason and Thurston Area Agency on Aging for the Olympia Fire Department to provide post-hospitalization supportive care through the Community Assistant Referral and Education Services, known as CARES, program. Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I can't help but notice what beautiful bookends this expansion of the fire department service is with the description of the critical call that we heard at the beginning of the meeting, that this program is to create one FTE who helps folks post-hospitalization, to help them navigate whatever they need to navigate, so that they have an alternative to calling 911 again, having the fire engine pull up to give them company until an ambulance comes, to give them transport. And so it's reducing both the load on the fire department and also hospital readmissions, and improving the quality of life for the folks who need this intervention. And I think that it illustrates the same value that we have from CREW, from the Crisis Response Unit, from familiar faces, from the Downtown Walking Patrol, that we've created a variety of interventions that make people less likely to be in crisis, and then therefore less likely for all of our first responders to have to respond to a crisis. So I'm super grateful that this program is standing up, and I think it's a great extension of the basic life support, transport, and CARES programs that we've initiated, is to help those folks settle back after they're released from the hospital. So I just, I just wanted to call that out, especially against the backdrop of that call where we heard where every second counted and every available staff person counted. This is one way to free up more people and have them get there more quickly. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking to that, Councilmember Gilman. Okay, so that concludes our polls on the consent calendar for tonight. So I need a motion to approve this evening's consent calendar.
Move approval. Second.
All right. All those in favor of adopting the consent calendar as published signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent calendar is adopted. So that takes us to item 6A on our agenda, which is the approval of the 2025 Percival Plinth Project People's Choice Award. And we have presenting tonight Stephanie Johnson, who is the Arts Program Manager in our Parks, Arts and Recreation Department, with Kathy Dorgan, who is the Chair of the Olympia Arts Commission.
Thank you so much, Mayor Payne, and members of council. For the record, Stephanie Johnson, Parks Arts and Recreation. And we are pleased tonight to present you the recommended sculpture for the Percival Plinth Project People's Choice Award. Percival Plinth Project started in 2011. Annually, the project begins with council approval of sculptures selected to be exhibited on Percival Landing each year. And these are the 17 that were on Percival Landing this, starting in July. Part of the project is the People's Choice Award, where one sculpture is selected for purchase by the city based on a public vote. After a year-long exhibit, all loaned sculptures are returned, and the People's Choice winner is typically displayed at City Hall for a year before being reinstalled in another Olympia location. And by the way, I think tomorrow the sculpture is due to be reinstalled. So you'll see a new one tomorrow here, Ember from 2024. This will leave the plinths open for a new exhibition year and a new opportunity for the community to select a People's Choice Award winner. So in 2025, back in February, city council approved the sculpture, so the exhibition recommended by the Arts Commission for the Percival Plinth Project, which were recommended by a jury before them. Works were installed in late June, followed by the People's Choice Award, public voting period July 1 through 31. Community celebration, or rather kickoff, was held on Percival Landing July 12, where we handed out program maps and sweet treats to passersby. Mayor Protem Lynn was there. We received positive feedback about the 2025 exhibition, and this year's voting was very competitive. We very much appreciated the participation of all exhibited sculptors. Oh, and I didn't say that we received 519 ballots during this period, this year.
I am excited to share the voting results for the 2025 People's Choice Award. Right, thank you. The runner-up, Salmon Returning by Mark Brody. Runner-up. And the People's Choice recommendation is Crane Study Number 47 by Travis Pond. I see we have some fans. Based on results of the public vote, Crane Study Number 47 by Travis Pond is the Olympia Arts Commission recommendation for the 2025 People's Choice Award. The action before you is to move to approve the recommended sculpture for the People's Prize Purchase Award.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the council? All right. I will just say that I'm very pleased at the winner, because, you know, Stephanie knows that I love the metal sculptures. And it looks like it's been repurposed steel, so that's always good when we can reuse something and turn it into art. So, all right, well, thank you very much. So at this time, I need a motion to approve. All right, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I approve, I move to approve the purchase of Crane Study Number 47 by Travis Pond, as determined by public vote and recommended by the Arts Commission.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations. Thank you. Mayor Protem also has a question for you.
Hi. Don't worry, Kathy, just taking an opportunity. Okay. The, so, thanks to Big Tom's Olympia. I think many of us have seen footage of the Gateway Art, specifically the apples and the tree. And so can you tell us what, oh, and for folks that are like, what is she talking about? There was, unfortunately, an accident where a car crashed into one of our, it's a Gateway Project, but one of the really beautiful sculptures, and completely took out this metal sculpture. I was amazed. And I'll point out, did not stop driving. So any, any update and/or any plans? I would think we've communicated with the artist since then, but if you could share anything, that'd be great.
Sure. Well, I guess I will volunteer the information that it has been a hard summer for public art. That was the first crash. We had a second crash at Triumph for the Vegetables in the farmer's market roundabout. So if you've gone around there, you'll notice that one of the posts, supporting posts, has sort of tipped in. So I've gotten very close to Susan Nevis, Nevis, in the attorney's office, working on claims. So we are working on claims for both of those projects. I've received estimates for both of the projects. And the loss of the tree is a big one, so I'm kind of waiting to hear what insurance will say, the driver's insurance will say. For the second one, I can cover it in my budget until we find out what the insurance says, or I can, I can cover it in my budget, so.
Thank you for sharing all of that.
You're welcome.
Someone hit the vegetables? When did this happen?
I haven't seen the report. I'm, that's not, I don't, I don't get to see the report. Susan has seen the report, so, but I don't know if it happened, like, in the middle of the night or in the morning. I don't know. Because there was no Big Tom in that one, so we don't know.
I know. We know more of him.
Yeah, but it happened probably, I would say, a month ago or so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't conflating the two. Okay. This is also one of those moments where I feel like I'm on a sitcom right now, like Parks and Recreation. But thank you so much for taking the time.
I hope that's the end of the, yeah, the public art in the street situation.
Well, thank you both. So we're going to move on to our final business item for tonight, which is the approval of a resolution accepting the draft Public Participation and Partners Chapter of the Olympia 2045 Comprehensive Plan. And we have David Ginther, who is our senior planner, presenting tonight. Hi, David.
Good evening. Thank you. All right. Thank you for having me tonight. This has been a couple of years to get to this point, so I'm very happy that I'm able to present the, hopefully, the final, I'll put quotes around that, the final version of this chapter for you. The, as you can see from the timeline here, we started out with, well, The, as you can see from the timeline here, we started out with, well, it started out with a very initial briefing at Planning Commission almost two years, a little over two years ago, and we followed that quickly with a public survey that was, that was well, not attended, but we had, we had a lot of participation in that. It was surprising. We had almost 95 people, which is a great turnout for surveys such as this. And then we went to an open house, other committees and commissions, a public hearing in October of last year, and there was a city council study session in the spring of this year. Just to give you, as difficult it is, as it is to summarize a chapter in three bullet points, I've attempted to do that here, and also, based on the public comments that we received during the process for the update, these are the three things that really stuck out to me as to what this chapter is really about. Participation opportunities, as many as possible of all sorts, just to make sure everybody has the opportunity for engagement. Everybody has a role to play in crafting how our community moves forward. And then partnerships, collaboration, and, and participation, those are really what make the community a better place. Once again, back to the survey, 95 people, 94 of them did it online, and one person did it by paper. I wanted to point that out, because that's, different methods of getting to people is mentioned in this chapter update. Generally, people thought that the chapter was in pretty good shape with the goals and policies, but they'd really like to see more reporting back to the community as to how we're doing, what we're doing, and how well we're implementing the, the chapter. They wanted to see the highlights, the successes, and other areas where we might need to work, strive, strive to improve, so. Just one example, there's, there's many throughout the chapter, the changes based on public comment, but one of them here is specifically to what I just mentioned about how well we are achieving our engagement goals. It's an underlined portion, right in the middle of the paragraph there. And then continue to inform the community of the progress. So those, those are the kinds of changes that the community, the input that we received wanted to see. Right. Onto the committees and commissions that reviewed this, the Social Justice and Equity Commission did take a look at this, and you'll see this echoed in the youth council comments as well. Outreach to young persons was not mentioned much in the chapter at all, so that has been shored up. And then different types of outreach methods, and I mentioned the one person who was able to take the, the survey in, on paper. We specifically wanted everybody to take it that could, and one person said, I don't do online, can I take it by paper? Certainly. We certainly make that effort to get that input. The, the photos in the chapter, many of those were updated to show a greater representation of, of our community, including youth. And this is a representation of several of the changes that resulted from the comments from the Social Justice and Equity Commission. I won't necessarily go through every single one of these here for you, but I do want to point out a couple of them. The, there was specifically a section added for the Squawson Island Tribe, where the ceremony at the Squawson Park, the naming of the new, the new name of the park, when that ceremony occurred. We had a great photo of the celebration that was added, and we do have some additional updated sections about outreach to communities on the front line. These are specific words that we were recommended to use, communities on the front line, and those that are overburdened and vulnerable. And we did get a comment from the state. The state did reach out and provide comments on this, specifically on those terms, and we also received some comments from council members and committees on those specific terms. And at the bottom, new photos of youth participating in meetings, which I will show you in a moment. The youth council, they wanted to make sure that we accentuated, at least to mention and point out in the chapter, that to get youth involved, you really need to reach them, outreach them. And so that has been added to the chapter in a few locations, and we've also got additional photos. Here's two of the photos. I see some familiar people in the one on the right, the Olympia Youth Council photo. I was able to grab this off the city website. It's a great photo showing the council members and the youth council members. The other one is the homeless response public meeting. There were some photos taken at that, and it was fortunate that there were some youth attending as well. Here's an example of one of the changes based on comments from the youth council, specifically adding youth, youths, excuse me, that's a, not, not rolling off the tongue very well there, adding youth to the, to the, to the policy, Policy 2.1. There are several other chapter updates that were needed. There's, there's, in the annotated version of this that's online and was in the, in the, in the packet, it does show comments on the side as to what that change, where that change came from, what, what it was based on, example, public comment, or one of the committee's commissions. I'll go through these relatively quickly, quickly here. There's a brand-new policy about engaging with recognized neighborhood associations. The policies on property rights and land use moratoriums, those were proposed to be moved to the Land Use and Urban Design Chapter. I did get several comments from the public saying, these really don't fit in this chapter, they should really be in another chapter, and that made great sense. There's a new policy regarding how the city responds to public input and informs the community about how that input was used, and then communicating with subarea representatives and the subarea, and, and those that live within subareas. And there's a whole section in here about subarea planning. The city does have about 11 subareas, and two of those subareas have performed subarea planning and have finished those plans, and those are on our city website. There was a section in here on housing densities, which was unusual, but the city now has a housing chapter in the comprehensive plan. So that was removed from here, and it was to be integrated into the housing chapter as appropriate. More land use items were in here, like the Transfer Development Rights Program and annexation. So those were both moved to the Land Use and Urban Design Chapter. And there were several updates to the section on interjurisdictional partnerships. At the April 15 council, council study session, there was a number of directions and guidance given to staff for additional changes. I've noted those in the draft, and I wanted to mention a few of them here. There was a new policy added, that the city will strive to hear from all demographics of the community in an equitable manner. That's Policy 3.9. Again, more photos were added to show more diversity in the community. And the narrative was amended to acknowledge that community members may not always agree, and that a busy day of life can sometimes act as a barrier to participation. That one's on page four. And lastly, Policy 4.5 was adjusted regarding the city of Olympia using emerging, emerging and best practices for public participation. And that is the chapter. Here is a possible recommended motion for you, and I will turn it back over to Mayor Payne. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Lot of work that's gone into this, but I appreciate it, especially given kind of what we just saw in the chambers here tonight. I think it's appropriate that we kind of, you know, are capturing what, you know, how we envision engaging the public. And it's kind of ironic, because that's exactly what we do all throughout the Olympia 2045 Comprehensive Plan process, not just for this chapter. So hopefully, we used some of our experience for this to actually inform this chapter as well. Any questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Madron.
Thanks for all your work on this, David. I was looking at, you know, what came to us from, in the spring, in a study session, and what we have in front of us tonight, and I see that you've incorporated all the changes that we've requested. Love all the new photos. I knew that we had fresher photos than the last one around, so I appreciate you digging those up. And, you know, it, it's funny, because you mentioned familiar faces, and I, I noticed some familiar faces from the last comp plan update, and I'm like, oh, yeah, she used to work for the city. And now we've got fresh photos in there showing, you know. It actually really shows how our, our public process has evolved over time. There's, it, it kind of documents, like, the different ways that we engage the public, so I appreciate you doing that little bit of extra work so that we can have that visual representation in there.
Thank you. Councilmember Green.
Thank you so much for this, and I, I missed the April session where we talked about this, so I just kind of wanted to make a comment, and it's probably less directed at you than maybe Jay and, and city staff. That's right, it's coming. No, I just, there was something that jumped out at me as I was reading it, in that there was a paragraph that said, you know, we strive to be jargon-free, and then in the next paragraph, we say why we use the phrase "subarea planning," which is as jargony as city government can be. And so I just, I just, my, my comment is just, I, I don't know how to do it in a systemic way, but I think this is a push to remind the city that when we are talking, and, and council as well, that when we are talking about these issues, particularly things like the comprehensive plan that are going to guide the direction of the city for years, I think always questioning that, that idea of jargon and the phrasing that we're using, and kind of running it through the, you know, average person test, I think would really benefit us when we talk about public participation particularly, so that was my comment.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Nguyen.
Oh, I'm so glad you said that, Councilmember Green. And I have kind of a big overall thought on this, and I, and I also want to be sensitive that it's taken so long to get it here, you know? So, so sometimes when, when it gets here and you still have some feedback on it, it gets potentially awkward. But, in, in the interest of wanting it to be the best that it can be, I would just plus one, what Councilmember Green said. I also saw, like, political gridlock in there, you know? What does that mean? So, you know, some, yeah, and some people in our community, I would say, actually, most people that I talk to, they're like, I don't care about politics, I just want this to be fixed. It's like, yes. Well, I care about politics, but anyway. So, so I don't want to necessarily give you a big to-do, although there, what I heard from what you were saying, Councilmember Green, is there's a case to be made about really being intentional about plain language and what that means. And plain is different for everyone, but really just having, you know, there's very specific guidelines about how to do plain language, and so, you know, maybe not on this right now, but into the future, I think definitely having a conversation about that and making sure that we're all on the same page. Also, just want to say that you should not run for council or vote in an election. You should always vote in an election, and you should run for council if you so feel called to. But it's not either or, and if you're running, you might as well vote for yourself, okay? So, so maybe that's something that folks on the dais could appreciate, anyway. And then I just had kind of a, kind of an overall question for you, which is, I noticed that there were, there was an area in here that was talking about, you know, trying to communicate information in more, just different avenues. So I appreciated that. And then also, I didn't see, you know, signing up for the city newsletter and listening to our podcast, even if we didn't say it exactly like that, or engaging with our social media. So these are more, I don't know if I would call it, like, you know, participating in, in the way of, like, partnering in something, but it's a little bit more passive, and so just knowing about what's happening in the city. So then, and I think that just knowing all of the different efforts and all of the things that we're doing just to maintain current things can also help folks not get so frustrated or, or know about different services that they could utilize before, you know, coming to public comment and, and getting really upset about something, or, or phoning in and, and not quite knowing who to talk to, right? So, yeah, I wondered, I guess, if there was a reason for not including that as, as, calling that out in the, in the area of, like, here's all the different ways that you can participate. So I don't know if you have an answer to that, and maybe it's hidden in there and I didn't see it.
Generally, just trying to be broad and have a high-level view of it, but we certainly can be more specific if you'd like to be.
Yeah. Well, and, and Councilmember Cooper is often whispering to me, and, which makes me chuckle, and he's right this time, is that he said that, and none of those things will be here in 20 years. So maybe something that, an ad, but it could be kind of broad, right? And so you're not, maybe you're not saying specifically our Facebook account or something, but, you know, just knowing that there's a lot of different ways to access information about the city, and, and making sure that you're signed up or to, to get it through that channel, whatever that is, right? Whether that's a, a regular podcast, or signing up for the newsletter, or reading your five things to know. I guess you don't have to sign up for that one, it's going to come to you anyways, isn't it? But you get the point. And I would actually, I was a little bit joking, but I am actually serious about separating out the voting or running. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I just want to reflect back, because we're at the point where we're, we're making, like, finer refinements before this comes together as the big package. Some of the specific things I heard is, like, separating the run for city council or vote in the election. Totally agree with that. You could, you could do both, and I would certainly hope if you're doing, you know, the first one, you would do the other. You're right. I, I'm hearing adding a bullet to this section in terms of subscribe to a source of city news, or something like that. I think that's broad enough that it captures how news is delivered over time. And then I heard a third thing from both the Mayor Protem and Councilmember Green in terms of addressing jargon, and that's the one where I just want to make sure that David has very clear direction. Like, are we asking him to comb through this particular chapter, right, you know, and, and clean up jargon at this point? And, and if so, are we doing that with the others as well? So, or was that an overall observation? I, and I, and I asked just, just so that he knows, what, what is being asked of him?
Yeah, I appreciate that clarification. Yeah, for me, it was just an overall observation. I don't think it's something that would necessitate, because it would necessitate going through every chapter. I think for me, it was just a call and a reminder that that's something we need to pay really careful attention to.
Thank you, Councilmember Madron. We're seeing one of your strengths, aren't we? Yeah, so, plus one on that with Kelly. So that last one was just, hey, an overall look at it. Yeah, so it's not just you, Dave, it's everybody in every chapter, but thanks.
Thank you. Okay, and Danny, thanks for taking that away from me, because that was what I was going to ask. Councilmember Cooper, followed by City Manager Bernie.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Payne, and maybe this is where, where Jay is going to go. Having sat through a lot of meetings about plain talk early in my time on council, driven by one council member in particular, the, my question is, is plain talking part of the editing process that the final will go through? Because we know that all of this still has to be edited.
So I'm going to say two things along to that. I think it's, it's our goal constantly to try to make sure that we're not too jargony, and we try to plain talk so that the community understands what we're doing. Unfortunately, I think sometimes we get caught in jargon, we get caught in acronyms. We do it all the time, all of us, and we have to remind ourselves to spell things out. So I think what I'm taking away from this is just to make sure we're doing one more look before this comes all the way back through at everything, just to make sure we've done everything we can to plain talk. I think staff have tried to do that along the way, but I think we can take one more look before all the chapters are completed to make sure we've done as thorough a view as we can of that. And some of the things, I think, were, were more broad and less specific, it was mentioned, because we don't know what the world will look like in 10 years, so we're trying to be broad where we can and not get too specific. But I think we'll look at, like, the communication piece, and I think that comment was well-stated, that I think there's a way we can phrase it that's a little more broad. So, yes, and, I'll add to the conversation.
Thank you. So are we going to motion to accept this as discussed?
That would be my suggestion.
Okay.
Is that okay?
All right. But before we do, I do have one question about a plain language guide. Do we have something like that for the city, like, in communications? Do we have something like that for the city, like in communications or anything like that at all?
We, thank you, thank you, Mayor. And we do have a style guide for editorial. And it does talk about the need for plain language throughout that piece. There are many examples, but as a concept, it's something that we do all attempt to reflect in our writing. Thank you.
Okay, good to know. Might be useful to take a look at that as we review the chapters. Okay, so at this time, I need to, oh, okay. More comments. Councilmember Green.
More comments, because we're just, we're on one of my passions here. Let's talk about plain language. We're vibing. I completely lost my train of thought, bear with me, going back to what Carrie said. Oh, I, my thought, and I'm going to look at Susan in the dark window back there. If you ever want real experts on plain language, that could be a very fun project for the youth council to say, read this thing we're publishing and tell us what it means. Or draw it in Pictionary.
Mayor Protem Nguyen.
Oh, respectfully, we were not vibing on that last one. So there is a, I'm not saying that this is the most superior one, but the, there is a governor's, because it's a directive for Washington state agencies. And so there is a specific guide to plain language. And so if it's all right, I'm happy to send you some. Yeah, thanks.
City Manager Bernie.
I raised my hand and I almost, I almost forgot what I was going to talk about. But one of the other things that we're going to work on is real soon is we're going to be updating our staff report training with staff. And a large portion of that training is going to be around, how do we plain talk? Everyone should be able to read a staff report before they walk in these chambers and know exactly what the decision is in front of you and not have to guess. And that's sometimes really hard work on technical topics. But it's one of the things that, we haven't done a training in a while and we got a lot of new staff report writers over the years. So as part of what Susan's going to be doing to do some staff report training is, we're going to integrate the plain talk conversation into that as well. So just wanted to add that. It is really important. It's, it can be a pet peeve for a lot of us when you read something and go, how would anybody in the general public know what that is or what it means if they weren't us? And so it's something we have to really keep working at. So I appreciate the comments around all of it, it's important.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Count, motion?
You want a motion?
Yeah, before we do, I just want to say it's ironic that people who talk like this all the time are trying to figure out how to see plain language. Councilmember Madron.
And before I give a motion, I'm going to take one last little bite of the apple here. There's plain talking, which is really important. And sometimes it is also important to explain technical terms to folks. Like, there's an education component to that as well. So not through our comprehensive plan, but just had to put that in there. I move to approve a resolution accepting the updated public participation and partners chapter as discussed for the Olympia 2045 comprehensive plan.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much, David. Okay. So that concludes our business for tonight. So we're going to go ahead and move right into council reports. And I'll begin with the mayor's report. So I just want to mention that we have been on a regular business meeting, two-week break, not to mean that council hasn't been hard at work in that two weeks, nor not to say that the staff hasn't either, but simply that we haven't met for the last two weeks. And over the course of that time, some of us had the pleasure of attending the Hands-on Children's Museum's Summer Splash Gala, which is always a pleasure to go to that event every year. And this year, it was a hit and another success again. And I really just want to say thank you to the museum for acknowledging us and recognizing the city with the great Friend to Kids Award that we were given this year. And so it was wonderful to attend and I look forward to attending again next year. I also attended the Rebecca Howard Park mural celebration just a couple of weeks ago, where there is now a, another beautiful tapestry that's on the side of the house there that's located on the site of Rebecca Howard Park. Wonderful artist painted it from up north. And it's just an incredible, again, representation of who Rebecca Howard is and highlighting the diversity in the city of Olympia. So I want to thank Shawna Hawk and also our staff with the Parks Arts and Recreation Department for, you know, helping with that project and attending the event, as well as all of our city managers who were there as well to celebrate the installation of that. And again, just incredible time to recognize all of the contributions to our community. I also attended this weekend, I had the pleasure of going to the South Capital Neighborhood's neighborhood picnic, which was wonderful to catch up with some folks there. This picnic actually is possible due to our neighborhood matching grant program, where they receive some dollars for that. And it also happens to be, I believe it's their board's annual meeting as well for the Neighborhood Association. And so I appreciate the invite to attend. And it's always great to get out in community and just chat and see what's on folks' minds. So I look forward to attending similar events in other neighborhoods in the future. City manager and I also had a meeting with Thurston Regional Library, with Cheryl Haywood and staff, continuing those discussions on a new facility and location for the downtown library. Obviously, there is much to consider in this regard that we, you know, have to still work through some of the challenges of where this library would be put. But we know that the current library is a very old facility and so they need a new, a new site. So I would just make a plug for us to continue those conversations for next year's work plan so that we can, Councilmember Madron's giving me thumbs up. But very much looking forward to continuing those conversations so that we can get our downtown library folks in a newer facility sometime in the future, hopefully in the near term. And I also just want to acknowledge some of the challenges they've been having in regards to some of the public safety concerns that they've been having around the downtown library location. And I thank Chief Parker for, and the department for your response to some of those challenges. And I heard that you had a very successful meeting, I believe it was earlier today. So thank you very much for your swift response on that. Also, just wanted to quickly mention that we, the subcommittee for the council assistant position has concluded our interview processes for, for that position. And so you all should be hearing something more soon about, you know, the conclusion of that process for the subcommittee. And again, just one last reminder to the community that we won't be meeting for the next several weeks for a regular business meeting and will return for a regular business meeting on September 30th. And next week's meeting will be a study session of the council. So that's my report. And I'll start to my right with Councilmember Madron.
So excited to hear you talking about putting the library in the work plan for next year.
A couple of items. The Land Use and Environment Committee met a couple of weeks ago. We have the Land Use and Urban Design Chapter coming to the council for a study session, whenever that's scheduled. But it has been passed out of the Land Use Committee. This is another one that David Ginther's been working on. And this one has had many touchpoints with the council already. It's been in front of us for a study session. It's been, that was like the third time going to land use. You know, so it'll be highly refined by the time it gets to us for a study session. But excited to have that move forward. We also had a discussion, you know, we had a study session as a council around the new rent stabilization laws and how we might respond as a city. And, you know, we asked that to come back to the Land Use Committee to kind of think about it some. And a lot of the things that we had heard from the council in that conversation is like, you know, trying to make things like not confusing. And the conversation in the Land Use Committee was that at this time, we'd like to just hold steady on what we have and kind of look to some other cities who have been putting out some communications that, that help folks understand what happened at the legislative, the state legislature, you know, how that relates to what we do here in the city and just make sure that we have very good, clear communication and education around it. So I'm happy to chat with anybody about that if you have any questions. But that's, that's our recommendation is to just kind of, you know, keep what we've got in place. We did a lot of outreach and engagement on that and we think we arrived at a good decision. And we think it's, you know, we think it could actually cause more confusion to try to go in and tweak things at this point. I know the next thing coming to us as a council as it pertains to rental stuff is a study session on screening policies. I know that staff have been hard at work doing some outreach and engagement with both tenants and landlords on that. And so that's the next body of work that's going to come forward to, to the council. The Thurston Regional Planning Council also met recently. I won't share everything that happened in that meeting, but I did want to share one little bit where we did adopt a regional vision for high-capacity transportation. The Thurston, and it reads, "The Thurston region envisions a future of seamless, convenient, and sustainable transportation options within local communities and connecting to the greater Puget Sound area and beyond, supporting the needs of a growing and dynamic region." You know, that doesn't get too much into the what types of high-capacity transit. But, you know, for the short term, we're really thinking about building out the existing networks that have room to grow. So express bus, Amtrak, van pool services. But also while doing that, thinking about, you know, what is the future of, you know, a higher capacity look like? And making sure that we're not preempting the future of potential light rail down here because we've built something where the tracks might have gone. So, you know, a lot of that has to do with a lot of the work going on on I-5 between Mounts Road and Tom Water. And, you know, where there's existing rail and things like that. But, you know, that's kind of how it's going to be for our region for a while is that we, the high-capacity options that we have available to us, we are going to build those out. And we're just not going to preempt ourselves from the really cool things we'd love to have sometime in the future, maybe in our lifetimes, but we'll see. And that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Madron? Okay, seeing none. Councilmember Vanderpool.
Laying the tracks. Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. So, yeah, okay. Not for everyone. So, some people. So I, I'd attended the Regional Housing Council this week. I have more notes for you and I'll give you that later. But we got an emergency funding request for Sandy's flats. There was a fire that occurred early this year. It would cost around $51,000. It was requested to Interfaith Works to cover the cost. We pursued this because, or we, we went forward with the request because the insurance coverage for the damages, the premium increases for any of the Interfaith Works across all their work would be increased over time. It wouldn't be worth the value of the cost for the $51,000. We also did our five-year plan update on the home, our housing homeless plan. This is a statewide planning requirement. I really appreciated the expanding the focus to include homeless prevention because for a lot, we do a lot of work that is in homeless response, but prevention, despite where we are with the budget. And over this last year, I think it's very important to include that in what we're doing. And then we had a follow-up to the retreat earlier this year about the mission statement. We essentially came down to, it'll be three, three main themes, funding, advocacy, and policy. Where we didn't come to a conclusion on what we were going to do. Next September's meeting, we'll have to draft a one-to-two sentence statement. Haven't gotten there yet, so you look forward to that. We also had the Sea Level Rise Executive Committee. We had a briefing on the Olympia Sea Level Rise Collaborative Five-Year Work Plan. We had an amendment to the collaborative bylaws just to streamline some of the process. A lot of very routine work, nothing that is, that is, that put a flag in, but very, very, but everything pretty straightforward. The Interstate Transit Authority also met. We had a van pool program update, just kind of, again, very routine, looking at usership. Usership has increased since the pandemic. We also got some updates on some of their newer vehicles, some hybrid vans, some hybrid cars, kind of just following, tracking where we're going into the future. A lot of positive direction. And then last night, I met with the Council of Neighborhood Associations. A lot of talk about sidewalks and street trees and a lot of that conversation going forward. And they're very, very interested in that being on the work plan next year, hopefully. So, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Vanderpool? All right, thank you. Councilmember Gilman.
This afternoon, I met with Thurston County Board of Health. And just one item I wanted to bring forward from that, that meeting. Next week is Septic Smart Week. And we, we occasionally talk about trying to do septic conversions, but we very seldom talk about the reality of there being a few thousand septic systems within the city of Olympia and that there are ways of using the system, ways of maintaining it, and some simple repairs that homeowners can do themselves that both protect their health and protect the water quality for the environment. So the county has a trainer who's been doing a series of septic sense workshops that are free, that offer the kinds of knowledge and skills together to help somebody keep their, their system functioning. So I would say, if you have a septic system, next week is the right week to do a little bit of Googling because there are both State Department of Health and Ecology, federal EPA, and Thurston County Resources about ways to take care of it. And, and the one punchy piece of advice that I received today is the best advice to take care of your septic system is don't put anything into your septic system that didn't go through your mouth first, except for a little bit of toilet paper. There you go.
Graphic is the right word to describe it. All right, any questions or comments for Councilmember Gilman? All right, seeing none. Mayor Protem Nguyen.
Councilmember Gilman, always memorable. Okay, I'm just gonna, I have actually quite a few. I'll just hit it really quickly. So on August 21st, there was hosted by the Olympia Masters Builders in partnership with many others. And I think sponsored by the Washington Realtors Association, was the Elected Officials Home Building Bus Tour. This is something coming together again, sort of a continuation of something that has been had in the past and is kind of coming back again. And it was, it was lovely. We, a bunch of elected officials, including Councilmember Gilman and Councilmember Vanderpool, joined me and other elected officials. And Mayor Payne, well, you drove your own, you didn't get on the bus, but it's okay. And then hopped on the bus as Inner City Transit Partnership and went around to different building sites and talked to folks at Develop or Build Homes. And we were given a lot of materials about how it, some of the challenges that they have and some of their goals. And I think our, you know, there's some shared goals, definitely. And we, we all kind of come in it with, with a different agenda. And I was really kind of, I didn't really know what to expect, but I was really pleasantly surprised to hear recommendations from those folks that are just smart. You know, I thought I was just going to hear a lot about impact fees, you know? Like, give us more, you know? And, but there were things that were completely doable and don't really cost much at all, which is we have some longstanding developers in the community that are used to working with, with longtime city staff, for example, right? And finding solutions together. And now that the workforce is sort of turning over in a big way and... And now that the workforce is sort of turning over in a big way, and just not having those relationships anymore to folks at the city, or the county, but in our case, the city. And so is there sort of a mentorship or a handoff that could be done there? And so that, those valuable ways of learning how to get through challenges together can be kept, right? So that's an example. Happy to forward the different materials that we have. And then August 27th, I got the privilege of stepping in for the mayor at the Lieutenant Governor's Cities Housing Roundtable, he's calling it. It was a really lovely meeting that was well-run. It had a lot of different cities in it, both in-person and virtual. And we all somehow got chances to share in two hours. And the biggest thing that I want to share with you here is that, I think it's no surprise to some, that the Lieutenant Governor is, and Governor, is very interested in looking at how do we take commercial space, whether there's a structure on it or not, so it could be just a vacant lot, and turn it into housing, right? Or mixed use, so shops at the bottom, housing at the top. And so they were taking in a lot of, you know, how did cities feel about that? What are challenges that they've come across? They're pretty focused on challenges that come with building codes, specifically for energy efficiency building codes, understanding the intent of it, but really kind of questioning how challenging it seems to be for home, or, yeah, for building, building buildings. And there is an opportunity that they had shared, that's not quite ready for primetime, so we don't have all the details yet, but I know we'll be tracking it closely through staff. So there is going to be an opportunity for, they didn't say how many cities, but it's not all Washington cities, but it would be coming out of the governor's office, and it would be an opportunity for the city to apply to be a part of a pilot project, where there's, and so if, we are a city that I think should apply. And so we would be applying, and if we did, if we get accepted or chosen, then they, the governors, the governor would help us with three projects, and they're very specific projects. So one has to be with an organization that would be a lot like the Low Income Housing Institute, or something like that, right? One has to be with a private partnership, the other one, I forget. But there has to be three projects, and they would work with the city, just partner to partner all throughout, until those three projects are complete, and help reduce barriers that would come up. And, you know, like, so what's in it for them, other than housing, is that they would carefully track all of the activity that would happen on these projects. And so at the end of it, then the governor's office would have numerous case studies, right? And so then that could, that could inform further policymaking. So just really find this to be a big opportunity, and I think that we are poised, as a capital city and a city that's done so much in housing, to make sure that we don't miss that application window. So with that, just moving on to September 3rd, got a chance to visit the PBIA, or the parking bicycle, or sorry, the parking, excuse me, Parking Business Improvement Area. And they are, you might recall, a couple of weeks ago, we had a brief conversation about if we could use city funds instead of the PBIA's funds to fund a consultant for them. And I got to share that we had decided to do so. We took it out of Economic Development Funds, so, thank you, Susan. And, oh my goodness, they were so appreciative. You know, it's not everything, but it's such a big gesture to say that we are, you know, we as a council are being responsive to what they're asking. And a couple of members just were almost in disbelief. And, I guess I'll just share anyways. And a couple folks said, okay, I will pay my back dues now. So a win, I think. And then, oh, I officially started as our Olympia representative on the Board of Experience Olympia and Beyond. We had our annual meeting. I'm really excited that the city of Olympia will once again be represented on there. It's been a bit, and I think there's a lot of good that we can do. Also wanted to share that on September 5th, I know, almost done. On September 5th, I had my first quarterly meeting with our new police auditor, it's the OIR group. And the, I think the biggest thing from that meeting was that we had decided to, I'd welcome your thoughts on this, but we had decided to hold on having a mid-year report, and just waiting until about early next year to have a full year-long report. That gives them some time to start the role, and to come to Olympia, meet with different folks, including the community members on our new community policing board, and hopefully us as a council, so something to look out for, an invitation to look out for. And then also, just an FYI, that we'll be looking forward to an annual report in probably January or February, as opposed to having a mid-year report and trying to cram it into the, to our, to our current work plan. Okay, and then finally, just a reminder, that on September 11th, there is the Fair Housing Training that we'll be doing with staff. It is at four o'clock. And I know there are some of you that were just going to respond to that calendar invite and are looking forward to doing so after this meeting. So hopefully, we can see you there. And special thanks to Krista Lundson in your shop, Susan, for just kind of bringing that home for us. I know there's a lot of different pieces there to get it coordinated. That's everything.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Vanderpool, followed by City Manager Bernie.
Could you forward me some of that pilot information, if you have any?
They won't give me any, but I can, I can, it wasn't, yeah. They're gonna have it, we should have it in like, three weeks or so. They should be announcing it then. Yeah, I think there's some t's to cross, i's to dot.
Okay.
Yes.
City Manager Bernie.
Yeah, just to follow up on the Lieutenant Governor's summit and all the actions, so Mayor Protem had a chance to download to me. I downloaded to Susan McLaughlin, and I know Jenica Moshotter, Economic Development Director, was there with you as well. So we're gonna do some more follow-ups on all this as well, and I actually think Susan is going to reach out to you directly and try to grab some coffee and download everything you heard. So we'll be following up on all that.
Yeah, thank you all for being at that important meeting, you know, and representing the city. So, thanks. Mayor Protem, your comments about being back on Experience Olympia and Beyond, something that I think is important, not just for us, but I would say for all of the jurisdictions, is to really approach the conversation around appointing a new director and having the cities be involved in the process for doing so. So, just something to take with you. Thank you. Councilmember Green.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Following not in the footsteps of Mayor Protem, I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Cooper.
Good, because I was over here trying to make things up. So, I'm just kidding. Just one item for me. So probably a year and a half ago, at one of our law enforcement and firefighter disability board meetings, former retired firefighter Steve Cooper and Mark Hahn, who's our at-large member of the committee, they brought back information about an organization from the LAF Conference, an organization called Concierge Care Advisors, which I had never heard of, and was really an interesting conversation at our board meeting around, this is a, so if you can imagine, so they do placements for adult home care, whether it's rehab or higher needs. And they do it because the facilities aren't allowed to go and recruit people in the hospitals, which makes a lot of sense. I never knew that. And so they're actually funded by the facilities through their marketing dollars to go out and help place people in the right place based on their needs. And it's a really great, like, an 800 number, you call them, they'll, I've actually used it personally, they will help you find the right care for your family member that's in need. And that conversation's been wonderful. We've been thinking, like, how do we get this information to more city staff members? And on Thursday, the 18th, so next week, in council chambers, from 10:30 to 12, all city staff and all retirees, so that includes the council, are invited to come for, it's called Get Your Ducks in a Row, Concierge Care Advisor Series, and it's on living and being and taking care of senior citizens. And so they'll have the Concierge Care Advisors, they'll have a real estate investment advisor, and a financial planner to do a training for city staff who either might be elder or might be taking care of elder family members, either currently or in the very near future. So I think it's a, a small conversation that became something, and it's just great to see a training available for what I think is probably one of the biggest needs in our broader community right now, is I just think about wrapping my brain around all of the pieces of my own parents. And, you know, I'm really lucky to have two right now, and have other siblings that will be here to help, and how hard that gets every time you reduce that number, to the point where we have lots of folks who are without family and left without means or any way to take, to get those resources. And so it's great to know that we have some services like this, and thank you to the LAF Board for bringing it to our, to our city.
That's great. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Cooper? Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thank you so much for sharing that opportunity with us. Could you just share again when it is and how we would sort of sign up for that?
Yes, and I, you don't have to sign up, you can show up, and I will forward this email from Debbie Hufana in HR, but it's on the 18th in chambers from 10:30 to noon.
Thank you. I also neglected to mention, when I was at the South Capital Neighborhood, it was great to see Cameron there, you know, getting folks to sign up for, what is our, I'm escaping on the name, but it's basically to adopt a drain or rake-a-drain program that we have in anticipation of the rainy season coming. And I was happy to sign up for that, because I'm just a second house over from a drain. So I encourage our community to do that, and please be a friendly neighbor in helping us keep those areas clean. So last but not least, City Manager Bernie.
Thank you. Rake-a-drain program. I also have a drain that's right at the end of my driveway. A lot of us sometimes do, and it's a great reminder that when the fall leaves start to fall, don't forget to check on your friendly catch basin that's right adjacent to your properties and keep them clean, because it prevents flooding. We can get flooding in neighborhoods in particular, so it's really important for us to look out for each other. And if you have time, which I do occasionally, is walk through my neighborhood and just take my rake and clear things out. So, good reminder.
Can I add on to that, City Manager?
Of course.
It's also illegal to blow your yard debris out into the street where it gets stuck in those drains.
Absolutely.
So please keep it on your property, or take it to yardways.
Or to rake your leaves out to the street and cover your drains. Please don't do that either. So thank you for that. And then just for me, just one item, as we, as you come off your two-week break, we have a very busy few months of agenda ahead of you, and I just want to point that out. On top of its budget season and trying to layer in budget meetings, we're bringing the comp, a lot of the comp plan chapters across the finish line. And we've got a few kind of major work plan items that are kind of getting their way across the finish line as well. So all that's to say is we've got some very full study sessions. We're, I'm going to do my best with staff and working with the mayor, Mayor Protem, to move things around as much as we can. But there will be just some busy and some very meaty meetings ahead of you, and I just wanted to point that out. We're gonna, as you look at the upcoming agendas, you're just going to see a lot, and there's a lot coming your way. So it's kind of a buckle-up message.
All right. Well, thank you. Any questions or comments for the City Manager? All right, seeing none. It's good to be back. So with no further business before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.